Okay. Thank you so much for coming and being a part of this. I just ran in here real quick from work, and I know many of you probably did the same Jody, the mayor, was supposed to be here to welcome you. She has some family issues she's taking care of today and can't be here. So I'm Greg Bowlen, Vice Mayor of the town, and I just want to thank you for taking time to come here. This is important to hear from you. It's an important time for you to give input and give us your thoughts. We need that. We need to hear what you think we need to do and where we need to go. Little bit of information for you is, first off, we want to thank UDA for being here. Barry is the lead on that, and he'll be talking to you. The town has brought them on by grant. We had a grant from Butte Strong Fund of the North Valley Community Foundation. UDA specializes in post-disaster planning and recovery. They worked on things like Katrina. We've heard of that. While UDA is helping the town to lead the efforts, the emphasis is to get your input. And that's what we're here today to do, is get your input. So Barry's going to give us a little intro as to who they are. We're going to be talking about things, interesting things such as sewer. That's pretty interesting, huh? How to improve our downtown, safety improvements for evacuation, improved warning systems, keeping a small-town feel in Paradise, and other things. That's just a few that we're going to work on. So, without further ado, this is Barry. Just give him a warm hand.
Well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Bowlen, for introducing us this evening. And thank you all for coming out. We've tried to schedule these listening sessions at different times of the day. Our first one, some of you may have attended, was at 10:00 a.m. We were asked for a late-afternoon session, and then later, we're going to be repeating this meeting at 7:00 over again. And as Greg said, we're here to listen to you. We're going to get into that and why. But the residents and the stakeholders, but led by the residents, you have to design, define the vision for Paradise in the future. We're not here to do that for you. We're here to be your hands. So the majority of this meeting is going to be listening to you. We have a terrific group of facilitators, which we'll explain about that portion of the meeting in a few minutes. We're going to break up a little bit later and go into individual groups so we can hear your voices. Better than we did in the morning meeting, we had 530 people come to our first meeting. Gymnasium was not available. We tried to do it all in here. And anybody here at that meeting? Was it a little noisy?
Yeah.
Yeah, no kidding. So we fixed that tonight. There was a relief agency in the gym. Tonight, we're going to break up, when we get to talking, into small groups, and we're really excited about that. So with that, I'm going to get started. I'm just going to give a quick overview. And again, I'm very long. I'm a principal with Urban Design Associates. We're a consultant to the town through a gift to the town from the Butte Strong Fund. But this is a town-led process. So the agenda this evening, I'm going to explain a little bit about what is a recovery plan, because that's what we're doing. It's important for you to know. Steps in the planning process and where we are today. Building and adapting my home. We can't just work on a vision for the community without acknowledging that residents are thinking about rebuilding their homes. So we have to focus on that at the same time, because those processes are going along in parallel. And then finally, and most importantly, we're going to be listening to you, the residents. So we haven't put pen to paper. We don't have designs for your community yet. We're in the listening mode right now. So as the Vice Mayor said, a little bit about our firm, why are we here? We are town planning specialists. We do have disaster recovery experience, as the Vice Mayor said. We're actually affordable housing experts. We have a national practice in affordable housing. And Paradise was very affordable. And that's both affordable by design and affordable, made affordable by subsidy. We work on both. We were working here before the disaster, and that's actually part of the reason that we're back. We just happen to have all this other experience. But we're working in Butte County at the foot of the hill on the Marion Park Master Plan. So we've been working here in Butte County for about four years. And we also specialize in community engagement. We're leaders in that. And most importantly, that means that we work by listening to you. Put all your good ideas out on the table and assemble those into a vision for the future. We're facilitators. So what is a recovery plan? This is a plan that's going to focus on recovering from the disaster. And there's some key principles. It's going to be community-driven, led by you. It's going to be based on resident involvement. It's going to be locally controlled. It's going to incorporate mitigation approaches and techniques, and it's going to focus on projects that most contribute to community recovery from the disaster. So what does that mean? That means we're not going to come up with some kind of vague recommendations. We're actually going to have actionable projects at the end of this very accelerated process, so that we can move into getting funding and getting things done. That's different than just a broad, general master plan. That's why we're going to ask you to be very specific and look forward tonight with us so that we can come up with actionable projects. So the structure of this process is that the Paradise Community Recovery Plan is the official coordinated effort for the community recovery led by the town. Many groups have been working in support of the recovery effort. Make It Paradise, which is what we're calling this process, will bring all these stakeholders to the table. They're our partners. So you can see the structure. The town of Paradise is our client. The gift was given to the town, but we are not beholden to some third party. We, our contract is with the town. So we're a consultant to the town, and then we have all these supporting partner organizations working in support of the process. The timeline. It's a crazy timeline here. Usually timelines are like you do Thing A, and then Thing B, and C. Where we are in the process right now, we're doing everything simultaneously. Why? Because we have to. So we're working on the response to the disaster, to the campfire. We're also working on the recovery plan, and we're working on rebuilding. So where we say we are here, where the dotted line is, all three things are going on simultaneously. Below that, though, a lot of questions have been asked, what's the timeline for rebuilding my house? And when can I pull a building permit? Well, that target date is actually already passed. If your site is cleaned, you can actually apply for a building permit today. And that goes back to February. So what have we been doing to advertise this process? Our community outreach to date. How did we advertise today's meeting? Facebook posts on the town website, a Facebook event, media release to TV, radio, and print and individual organizations, direct contacts, interviews with TV and radio. Email local churches. We did a direct mail, or we did e-blasts, flyers. We had an open house here on Tuesday night. We had between 400 and 500 residents attend that, which is pretty remarkable, to get their questions answered. Word of mouth. And then makeitparadise.org, which is the smile on the buttons. If you didn't get your green button, make sure you get a green button on the way out. They're free. And the smile at the bottom. That's how our designer described it. She said, "The website makes a smile," so that has to be the right design. If you go to that site, everything that we're presenting tonight gets posted on that site. What we hear from you gets summarized and posted on that site. As recommendations come out, they'll be posted, and then we can send you information about the planning process from that site. Because when you sign up for that site, you're connected directly with us, so you can stay informed. What else are we going to do? A lot of folks can't be here tonight because they're not living in Butte County at the moment. Many are living in California, but to be honest, they're living in about 48 states. So we're going to be doing a survey off of this site so that residents, you're welcome to participate in the survey, and we encourage you to, but residents that can't be here can also participate that way in looking forward. And in April, when we do our next community workshop, and it won't just be listening, we'll be sharing recommendations and getting your feedback, we'll be live-streaming to the state campuses. And Chico State, who is working with us on this effort and actually came up with this wonderful idea, is going to offer to have residents who are living in proximity to other campuses come and view the meeting live and give feedback. That's another way that we will be doing outreach. So steps in the planning process. So the first step is relieving pressure. I'm going to explain these. The second step is listening to the residents. The third step, exploring ideas. And then the fourth step is deciding on a way forward. So in the relieving pressure step, we have Rebuilding and Adapting My Home, which is a brochure that we put together. Because when we started researching, what residents asked, what do I have to do? The information is out there if you want to spend time putting it all together in one place. And if you don't mind technical jargon, we tried to put together a little 12-page brochure that explained it in layman's terms, what you have to do. And it isn't any different than what you had to do on November 7th, actually. Today, that could change, but today it's the same. And this is now available on the website, makeitparadise.org. You can download it. It's 12 pages. And we would encourage you to do that. And we've also worked very hard on trying to contact as many residents and reach out as we can to invite them to have a voice in the process. So the next step, and we're into this step, is these listening workshops with residents and stakeholders. So we're having stakeholder meetings that are topical on things like the schools. But we're also having these large resident input sessions. Then we had an open house to answer residents' questions. We had experts here Tuesday night, and also for you to give us feedback. And then we've been doing individual stakeholder interviews to supplement the other initiatives. So in April, not sure why it worked out this way, but when we looked at the schedule, we had one month to do each step. That was it. The whole process is supposed to be done in a little over three months, and we just said, well, this should take a year. We have three months, so each step, we get one month. So the next month, we're going to be doing a workshop in April, and open houses, and stakeholder meetings again. And we'll be making a presentation to the community on a Thursday afternoon in the same format, a 4:00 and a 6:00 p.m. meeting, of recommendations. It's going to be a little different that night. We're going to actually break out in the gymnasium and ask you to share your ideas about recovery projects and what you think. And even higher level than that, about the vision and the goals moving forward for your community. So you're going to have a say. You're going to make sure that whatever you said to us, we got it right. And if something's missing, you can tell us that, too. That's next month. That's really important. And then finally, will be the deciding phase, which is scheduled for May. Town council has to get comfortable with this before they're going to go forward. So we're not going to rush the last step, because we don't actually control it. We can put together the recommendations with everyone's help. However, council has to vet that and be comfortable with it before we're going to move forward, because they have to adopt the recommendations. So there's going to be a presentation of the refined vision back to the community. We'll listen to you. And this, again, we're going to say, did we get it right? And then a presentation of the recommendations for council. And then hopefully, we'll be ready to be off to the races on the next step, because this is going to be a long process, on funding for the various initiatives and then implementation. So the schedule, we had February 22nd, again, one of these meetings, over 500 folks were here. On the 19th, this past Tuesday, we did the open house. Today, we're doing two listening sessions. And then moving forward, that week of April, the 16th, 17th, and 18th, we'll be here for three days. We're looking at hosting two open houses. Not sure of the format of those, because we'll be putting together the vision, goals, and recovery projects. And then on the final night, you're going to see a presentation and have an opportunity to tell us, did we get it right? So folks keep asking us, are there some overarching themes that are emerging? That's a very good question. Because when we started this process, some folks asked us, well, are they even going to rebuild the town? We said, well, yes, they said they're going to rebuild the town the day of the fire. I mean, it wasn't, we knew we were going to rebuild the town. We still have 1,800 structures that survived, the majority of which are not damaged, 1,300 are not, don't need significant repairs, have to be cleaned up. We also have a lot of infrastructure that survived, and we have a community spirit that's still very strong here to rebuild. So yes, we are going to rebuild the town. That's not negotiable. And then other folks have come in and said, well, isn't it a blank slate? No, it's not a blank slate. And they say, well, why not? To us, this is like a, it's kind of a collage that you inherited, where you have a lot of stuff here that's not going to move. You have 200 miles of roads. You have thousands of lots that aren't going to get replanted. And you have 1,800 buildings that are still here. You have schools. You have commercial buildings that survived. You have homes. A lot of the buildings and the landscape in the community were destroyed in the fire, but there's a strong foundation to build on. So it's not a blank slate. We are not starting over. Somebody can make that recommendation, but I can just tell you now, based on what we heard from the community in the first meeting, that's probably mostly dead on arrival, too. We're putting the community back together. We're going to recover. We're not moving the town or abandoning the town. And we're not, it's not a blank slate. We're someplace in between, and that's for all of you to define. But there are emerging themes. So one, make it safer. Is an emerging theme that we've heard really clearly, because it's a threshold issue. You can't come back unless it's safer. What happened on the day of the fire can't happen again. We have to make the town safer. There's a number of ways that we're going to talk about doing that, and we would love your recommendations, but it's got to be safer. Keep it affordable. This was a very affordable place before the fire. There was a broad mix of incomes, but it tended towards the more affordable side. And we have some challenges, because not one structure that burned down can be built back for the price that it probably sold for, or its price point at the time that it burned. That's a challenge that we have. But we look at affordability like a ladder. And if there's rungs missing on the ladder, or steps missing on the staircase, we have a problem. That's one we have to work on really hard. We'll bring our expertise to try to help, but we need to work together on that one, because affordability is critical. Make it better. Folks have said we need to make it better, but what we've heard is, we don't, it wasn't that it was bad before. It's just that there's opportunities to do some things that were already being talked about before the fire, and maybe some new ideas because of the tragedy. So we don't want to say that Paradise wasn't good or great before the fire, but there's some opportunities to, what folks have told us, make it better. And then finally, get residents back in their homes as quickly as possible. That's critical. We've heard that. We understand that. We are not going to recommend putting up barriers to having residents come back. The most important thing after a disaster is to try to expedite things. Get rid of some of the red tape so that we can move ahead quickly. So rebuilding and adapting my home, and this is the parallel process. What about my house? So it's tough to think about the community when you're thinking about rebuilding your house, or if your house survived, what the context around it is going to be, or your own unique set of challenges, which are different than rebuilding your house. So again, we put together this little brochure. It outlines the steps in the rebuilding process after disaster. That's a little different than your normal approach to building a house, which is, first, let's build a house. That's not what folks here said. I really want to build my own home. You're forced into that, but that was not how most of us approached building a home. Most folks don't build their own homes. So that's a unique challenge here. And then it goes through the five broad steps that you have to go through to get from where we are today with debris removal to occupancy. Go ahead, Megan. But we also talk about, in straightforward terms, the wild and urban interface requirements, which were required on the day of the fire. But most, most homes here weren't built to those standards, because they were built, the community was largely built out by the time those codes were enacted. It's not a huge requirement, but it makes the shell of the house fire-resistant. And then we have maintaining defensible space, which is critical. There's an explanation on that. What about manufactured housing? A lot of folks have asked us about this. It's addressed in this little brochure. And how can I strengthen my existing home? As we said, 1,800 structures survived, majority of which were homes. It explains that. So some of the most common questions about housing, what building codes are going to be required? And we can say that definitively. The same building codes today that were required the day before the fire are required today. They haven't changed. They were in place. Could they change? They could. But today, they're exactly the same. When can I submit for a building permit? When your lot's cleaned, you can submit for a building permit, and that process has already started. Will manufactured homes be permitted outside of mobile home parks? Yes. The federal government says manufactured homes will be permitted outside of mobile home parks, and that's been the law for a long time, unless you live in subdivisions with CC and Rs and some other things, which you didn't have an awful lot of. You know, Paradise developed organically, and there's wonderful things about the character of the community that can come out of that. But the answer to that question is, yes. Is the town going to require anything additional related to fire safety? The answer to that is maybe. Town council is listening, taking feedback from the residents, and thinking about maybe some new things. But today, the answer to that is, they haven't changed the approach to fire safety. And what about residential, commercial, and landscape design guidelines and standards? The town already had them, but will they be changed? The answer on that is probably. Probably one of the recommendations is that those need to be updated. They were a little bit dated. I want to say they were moldy, but they were a little bit dated. But one of the things that they weren't, or they didn't put right at the forefront, is fire safe. And yeah, we need some, we need a little bit of work there. I don't think I'm going to offend the town in saying that. Okay. Factory-built housing. So we have three types of housing, which may help us with the labor issue. One of the challenges we're going to have building back is you only have so much labor in Butte County. There's a production number. We don't know what it is yet, but when you hit it, you're not going to be able to go much beyond it. Because we don't have housing for the labor, so we're using local labor to do this. Rebuild. So manufactured housing is one way to have the houses factory-built and brought in. There's a lot of that here already. Modular is another approach. However, those are different from each other, and we're going to explain that. And then the third is panelized housing. So we have a little video here to explain manufactured housing installation. If you want to hear the developer music that goes with this little video, you can go to the website, makeitparadise.org, and I think it has the music. It's not very good. But really, I've heard it too many times. I've seen this video a number of times. So I'm just going to narrate the video, but there's some confusion about what a factory-built home is when they talk about manufactured housing. What it is, it's built off-site, and it's brought in and put on a foundation. This is an example of a permanent masonry perimeter foundation. What's in the middle, though, also supports the home, and that's also what would be required right now, is to set it on those type of piers. So you can see they're bringing the home to the site in two sections. It takes about six weeks, six to eight weeks, to build that home. Here, it would probably be built in Oregon and trucked in, because the companies that do this are along the I-5 corridor. That's where they're having most of their houses made. At the same time that's happening, though, your contractor, and they each have a contractor, is on-site, putting in that foundation, putting in the utilities, and getting ready for the home to arrive, a manufactured home. And here, the home is going to be lifted into place by a crane. With your topography, this would be not surprising if it had to be done this way, honestly. Lifted into place, but that's not atypical. So when you put it on a permanent foundation, you just swing it into place and set it down. You can see the roof looks a little funny on this house. It's actually hinged, so you can bring it down the highway. And then they're going to crank it up into place and drop kickers down to support it, so they don't have to build the roof on-site. And it would be great if everything was this easy. So you just lift up the roof. There it is. It just snaps into place. And they put the two sides of the home together, and you have a lovely 1,400 or 1,500-square-foot home, that everything on the inside is essentially finished when that house arrives. They have to marry it together. Still takes about another six weeks to stick frame the garage and do on-site finishing work, but most of the labor is, or a lot of it is done someplace else. So there's advantages to that here, and that's called a manufactured home. We'll go back to the presentation and look at the next image. So there's, there's been questions about a permanent masonry perimeter foundation and these piers. The piers are what are required to get a mortgage in California. So the one on the left is currently what's required by the code. The one on the right, a permanent masonry foundation, has some advantages, especially in Paradise, in that it seals up the underside of the house to keep things from getting under it. The code here requires you to seal that up anyway. You can't have embers getting under the house and the house starting on fire from the bottom side. And these homes have to be built to the WUWE code anyway. So the manufacturers are building a fire-resistant shell on these houses already. So one of the things we are talking about, and we'll get to it in a minute, is the foundations. A modular home is similar, and this is another video to show you how this goes together. And this is really going to make you jealous once you try to build a house, because they make it look way too easy. But here, too, it's fabricated someplace else, but it's brought in in pieces, not on wheels. It's brought in on flatbeds, and it's craned into place. And you can create just about any type of house with these segments. You see, they're still the size of a semi-truck, and there's more customization. And you'll see in a minute, the, some of the pieces are different shapes. But they use that same roof strategy. Here, they site finish the top of the roof, and part of the garage actually is built on-site. So there's more finish work on-site, and it costs about the same as a, I would say, the same as a stick-built home that's built on-site. The advantage is some of the labor pool comes from someplace else, or it can be done off-site, so we can accelerate the rebuilding process overall, potentially. And as we said before, it would be great if it was just that easy. It really would be. But that is how they put that house together, and it's pretty remarkable. So that's a modular house. First one is manufactured. Those are two different things. And the state of California has two different titles that govern those. Title 24 governs this one and most of the stick, all the stick-built housing. Title 25 governs manufactured housing. They're different requirements. So I'm not going to get deep into that, but just so you know, there is a difference between those things, and they're both permitted. So manufactured housing, there's a federal definition for that. So manufactured homes are built as dwelling units of at least 320 square feet in size with a permanent chassis, like a truck, to assure the initial and continued transportability of the home. That's how they define it. It can actually be taken apart and moved someplace else. That's a manufactured home. So manufactured housing outside of trailer parks, the town already has some requirements related to this. First, in the town's current zoning, and even before the fire, it talks about siding materials, minimum roof pitch, permanent foundation, and structural certification in the zoning ordinance. So by ordinance, the town can modify what they do related to manufactured homes. And it also meet, must meet all federal and state regulations, including the wild and urban interface requirements. Okay, so there is some potential future performance standards that the town could look at changing. So how can we make our homes safer? One thing the county's already done is said, if it comes from someplace else, it has to be 10 years old or newer, period. Can't be older than 10 years old. That's the county standard right now for Butte County. That's one option. Requiring interior sprinklers, they're already required for stick frame and modular homes. So requiring that for manufactured homes would be an option. Prevents that from being an ignition source. Doesn't protect it necessarily in a wildfire. Permanent perimeter masonry foundation, we already talked about that. It keeps embers from getting under the house. Increased roof pitch and required overhang. Some communities require that to encourage the roofs to be self-cleaning, more self-cleaning. You guys have a lot of pine needles on your roofs, even today, in the buildings that are still here. It's an issue. No roof obstructions that can collect debris, such as a solar panel mounted halfway down the roof. It would be much better to mount it at the peak, so it doesn't become a debris collector for embers or for dry pine needles. Some communities have enacted a garage requirement, so combustibles in the yard have a home. Do we have a new mic? We are having AV, well, just the audio.
Listening to that. We'll see if I sound better on that one. Thank you very much, Tim. Is that better, or is that worse? It's worse.
See, this is the great thing about our process. Voting works. So there we go. You just saw how our process works right there. The community has spoken. Garage, sorry. Thank you, though. So garages, the garage requirements allows you to store combustibles indoors. A lot of folks, when they evacuated, left a car at home. That became fuel. Some things, if they're stored in the yard, can become fuel. There was, someone thought in the last meeting that I said this is a requirement. It's not, and we want to be clear. This is not a requirement, but it could be something that the town either encourages or requires in the future related to keeping your combustibles indoors. And then lastly, fire-resistant accessory structures and fencing, because we know these things also started fires on some properties. So design guidelines and standards, we are likely to recommend updating, as we said, residential, commercial, and landscape standards as the next step. It would become a recovery project that would need to be funded. We need to spend more than three months on this, so we can talk to you about that separately while, after we're dealing with the big-picture stuff. Okay, and most importantly tonight, listening to you. So this is your opportunity to think about the future, and we are asking you to think big. That's not a promise that we can do everything that folks come up with, but if we don't think outside the box, we'll never, we may have lost an opportunity that we may never have again, and it's a unique time. So we are going to ask you to think outside the box. We're going to be doing breakout groups. What we ask you to do is to introduce yourself, to talk about the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities in your community. Then we're going to report out. The last time we did a report out here, it took over an hour. We have a new strategy tonight. So we're going to do two report-outs. One, for the folks that are going to stay in here with us and facilitated in groups, we're going to report out right here. So we're going to ask a group member, a resident, to come up, and you can volunteer in each of your groups, and report out what was discussed in your group. The other report-out's going to happen in the gymnasium. We're not trying to hide anything. What we hear from both report-outs, there'd be an executive summary posted on the makeaparadise.org site. We haven't done that for the first meeting yet, because we did not want to influence, inadvertently influence or cede the discussion today. So we've not summarized, we did summarize, we did not post it intentionally. It will all go up next week, though. Okay? So you will be able to hear both from that session and what happened in both rooms. And then after the sessions, after everybody's reported out, we would ask, if you would like to, that you please take a moment in either here or the gymnasium and place dots on the map in the lobby as you leave. And the dots correspond to these questions, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. And there's another map to pin my home site, where you can put a pin in your home site. Some folks said, "We're not living in Paradise right now." If you did live in Paradise, please pin your home site where it was, if you're not living here now. Because what we're finding is that the patterns of almost everything we look at are very evenly distributed across the community. When we look at the pattern of buildings that survived, it's almost like a perfect array all the way across the community, where people are interested in building back. It's just a perfect spread pattern. There's no concentration, which I guess is, for us, not surprising. And I also want to take this opportunity, before we get started, I should have done it right at the beginning, but to thank the Paradise Alliance Church. They've been so gracious to host this entire process. They've been wonderful. And actually, if we could give them a round of applause. I mean, and some of you may know the story, but this facility was saved by a member of the staff who was told to leave and didn't. He used the hose until, to put out spot fires until the water pressure was lost, and then he used every sprinkler, every fire extinguisher in the place. That's why it's saved, and this is actually the best and the largest probably meeting facility maybe in Chico that would have, even in Buick County, I'm sorry, that would have been available, because we looked down in Chico, too. Forget it. But for this, we'd be meeting in a parking lot somewhere, and I'm being serious about that. So those heroic actions, and if you go out front here, you may have seen the cross. That tree burned the day of the fire. So the gentleman who cut it down also carved a cross into it. If you look at the base of that tree, that tree did perish in the fire. That's how, the fire was right up against the church. It's a miracle that the building was saved. And we would also like to send, thank our facilitators. We have a terrific group of facilitators from many organizations here tonight. They're going to be noted as partners in the planning process in our final report, because they are partners. But tonight, they're here to help us listen to you. And that's, it's your neighbors, and it's other folks that have a vested interest in the process. They're not here to tell you what to say. They're here to listen to you. And I said last time, the blue button, if they're not listening to you, you can't keep an eye on all of them. You just point to their blue button and say. That's what they're here for. They're here to listen to you. And they did a terrific job last time. I'm sure they're going to do a terrific job tonight. So thank you very much. Also, for all the facilitators that are giving up six hours of their day, too. Because we didn't give them the option to go to just one meeting. We're having them do both. You want to go to the next image there, Megan? Okay. So most importantly, these are the, these are the questions that we're going to be facilitating. What are Paradise's strengths? And if you put a dot on the drawing when you leave this evening, it's a green dot. What are Paradise's weaknesses? With a red dot. And then what are the opportunities as a result of the disaster? And we'll have these posted in both venues, both here and the other side. The size of the group here tonight is about perfect. We can be in smaller groups, so we can listen to everyone. That's really what we want. I mean, the smaller the group, in our opinion, the better. So you came on a good night, at the right time. So with that, we're going to break you up into groups, and then we'll come back, and we're not going to talk anymore. We'll just be facilitating your report out to us. There'll be notes taken in each of the meetings, and then they'll be summarized and put on the website. And also on the map, as you leave, we have sticky notes. If you want to leave us a message, put it on a sticky note and put it right on the map. We're happy to write down those comments, too. There's comment boxes out here. If you'd like to leave us a comment, we're going to be putting together an FAQ sheet. So that's a way, too, that we'll be able to communicate with you, and that'll be up on the website. So we have a lot of moving parts here. We're moving quickly. Some folks are saying, "You're going too fast." Others are saying, "You're not going fast enough," so we're somewhere in the middle. But we are really privileged to be here and very appreciative of everyone that came out. So with that, we're going to break up the room. And where's Megan O'Hara? Want to come down, Megan? And the facilitators that are going to be over in the gym? Where are you? Okay? Hang on just a minute. Megan is also, my co-principal also is a Jacob Altucher. She's running the show up there, Ian. It's kind of like the defensive coach that's up in the, you know, the box, doesn't want to be on the sideline, and then has to run down at halftime. It's a little like that. All right. So what we're going to do, so we can hear better, is we are going to send these center sections. Unless, if you have mobility issues, you're welcome to stay with us here, but we're going to take the two center sections here, and we're going to have you go with Megan and the facilitators. This is Megan O'Hara. Right. If there's anybody who doesn't want to move or is, has a mobility issue, as we said, you're welcome to stay here. But if you don't, it's going to be much quieter to break into two groups. So what we're going to do is we're going to take the two center sections. We got the most complaints in the two center sections of being, people could not hear. And we're going to invite you to the very quiet gymnasium. And Megan, so if you could just follow Megan right out the middle door with the facilitators, and she will organize you over there. And if everybody else could just stay where you are for a minute, we'll organize you in a second. And the facilitators for our groups, please stay in here.
Sure. My name is Carrie Lambert, and I've been a Paradise resident since 1976, and my husband's with me. We were married 10 years ago, and we survived the fire, and we're very grateful.
And I'm Chris Garrick. We live in Oroville. However, our church is up here, and we have children in the lost homes here, so we are here for that purpose.
So our group started with the strengths, you know, that's really easy. We all love Paradise, right? So it's so cool to talk about that. We could have probably talked the whole time. But what we highlighted was what a sense of community we have, what a resilient environment and folks that we are with, how friendly and open everybody is with each other. Less traffic, if you moved from LA or the Bay Area, notice less traffic. Slow pace of life, great retirement site before the fire and now. We just got to move home. A close-knit community with great neighborhoods, a lot of nature and outdoor life, so if you want to bring your kids up in a super environment, this is the place. And there's a lot of peace and quiet. Then we tackled some of the tough stuff, and that had to do with the weaknesses in Skyway, too narrow. For those of us trying to evacuate, it was too narrow. Insufficient amount of emergency exits. When we talk about people, if they're wanting to come back or not wanting to come back, it has to do with the fact they're scared. And they're scared, "What if it happens again, and we don't have a way to get out?" And have to experience what we went through again. And that we have to, even the existing exits, we know all the trucks are necessary, but we know it's destroying our roads. They're going to have to be maintained for us to be able to evacuate if we had to again. And many folks did not hear about the fire on a timely basis, and there were some lives lost. So we want to make sure there, even if it's a siren-type thing, like for a tsunami, we talked about, how cool that would be, that we would all hear about it at the same time. And there hasn't been a lot of accountability about defensible space. We have a challenge with overhead power lines and the transformers, we're a big piece of the fire. Too many mobile home parts and no sewer system, and there's been, over the years, since gold time, unplanned growth. So our recommendations and things we thought through was opportunities to make Paradise a destination place with better restaurants and an area where we provided tax incentives to bring businesses back to town. A walkable town center area, and we heard some folks that talked about even creating Pearson as the downtown. Everybody is 100% got to have sewers, definitely got to have sewers, and we need underground electricity. Those two things were high on the list. And instead of redundant notifications, we need one system. Some folks called in to dispatch, and were told they didn't have to evacuate. And then it got difficult after that. Removing debris, there's a challenge that neighbors have asked us to talk about. There are people wanting to come back, but their lots are not being cleared, but lots are being cleared of people that are not planning on returning. So they were kind of hoping that would be dealt with a bit. And in the future, that we have a planned community with sidewalks. We watch children walking to and from school, like on Wagstaff, Pearson Building. There's no sidewalks, no safety for them. We want a planned community with sidewalks on all the major roads, and more skilled nursing. Enlo's doing a really good job of caring for the patients up here right now. But yesterday, I heard the figure that they have 220 licensed beds, and they have 260 patients yesterday. And the biggest problem is finding a place to discharge. We already were insufficient number of skilled nursing beds in this facility, in this town, and we lost over 300 beds, and so that will have to be replaced. We built our healthcare system. Right now, Feather River has their wonderful clinic on the bottom of Skyway, on the edge of Skyway leaving town. On April 1, they're going to be opening the downstairs part of it to care for patients that don't have an appointment or don't have a primary care physician up here on the ridge. We need to build more multipurpose dwellings, like apartments and duplexes. Build more areas for senior citizens, like have senior citizens centers. And emphasize the Blue Zone. Our group talked a lot about the Blue Zone. It's something the town has been working on, Feather River's been supporting it, where we have a healthy living for our folks. Put back in a radio station. And the last one was to reduce building bureaucracy and add more parks. And most importantly, here. Is the name, is still Paradise.
Thank you very much. That was a terrific report-out. Group one. Pat and Pat's going to come up. We appreciate it.
Terrific. I'm actually not going to turn the pages here, because you can't read that probably anyway. I'm Liz Dickinson, and I was, and still am, the director of nurses of Feather River Hospital. That is what I currently do and what I did the day of the fire. I live in Paradise. We live right across from the airport. The one thing about being third on the list is a lot of things have been said that we agree to, and we would have put up there. But I want to, I want to focus on a few things, on the strengths. The service societies and the local charities that we could support and be a part of, truly a family, and the ability to control our own public events. Strength. We actually had good healthcare on the hill here, on the ridge, and that was a strength. I'm proud of that. We did some amazing things the day of the fire. Evacuated all of our patients and all of our staff and our providers, and everybody got out safe. And so that was a huge strength. The challenge of that right now is to be able to turn around and provide that to a population that isn't fully here. So that is, that would be a potential weakness for us. Another weakness is accessibility. The evacuation on that day was pretty intense, as all of you know. So that is something for sure that's a weakness. Lack of lighting downtown and throughout. And of course, sidewalks have been talked about as well. An opportunity. Adventist Health has submitted a legislation, a bill, to Sacramento to see if we could actually open a freestanding emergency room. And it's, that would be great. We're hoping to be treated special and allowed to be an exception. Even if that doesn't go through, we're looking very closely at offering urgent care in the near future, so that we can have more immediate care. We do get people that walk in that are pretty sick right into our rural health center right now, and that's a real challenge. The last thing I want to leave you. Yeah, the threat. Well, downtown and lighting, I think we covered all the. We would love to have a town square. I think that would be pretty cool, and create a space down there, maybe even, maybe have it look a little bit like the olden times. That'd be kind of cool. Threat that wasn't talked about, and that is the fact of the bureaucracy and the delays that are being, that are likely we're facing. And we would like to be, we had a disaster like none other, and we wanted to be, we want to be treated special, so that's a threat if we're not. We want to be treated differently and special.
Thank you very much. We'll take your pads. Bethany will take your pads. Bethany? We lost Bethany. Okay. I think we're up to, we already did four, but we did not do three. Is that correct? We did one, we did two, we did four, three, group three up here. We'll have you come down. And then we'll go to group five right here in the front next. And that last presentation, that's good. So if you've heard things, and the gentleman was right, we will be documenting all of this and aggregating it together and posting it on the website. So even if a comment isn't mentioned, it won't be lost. So if we could add two, that would be terrific. Okay, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Tara, and I'm privileged to still be able to be campaigning in Paradise. We got, I got here a little late, so I came in after we got through the strengths, which was, for us, the churches. That led to a lot of community outreach. We had a donation. There was a closed cause that I've heard of, and then a hospice. It's really hard to express how impressed I was with everybody that's already been up here, so I'm just going to repeat a lot of what was already said. We were very affordable up here. We had a cooler climate. We had volunteer organizations. Thankfully, we had a small community that was friendly. I knew all my neighbors, and when I see them, I get so happy. And then when they're telling me they're rebuilding, it makes me even happier. The garden clubs, the parks. We have Gold Nugget Museum, the Gold Nugget Days, the booths, the Johnny Appleseed Days that we really enjoyed. And we actually were quite involved in the community, doing the dance studios with Positive Eye Revolution and the Paradise dancers that provided such a service for the young ones here, let alone our parks and recreation that offered. here, let alone our parks and recreation that offered so many things to enjoy different seasons and really, hopefully, a lot of people got to take advantage of that while they were here. Some of our strengths were the left turn arrows, the community events, the PPAC. There wasn't any one-way streets, which makes it nice for anybody that's not familiar. There's, they say no roundabouts, but I love roundabouts. The Performing Arts Center is one of the reasons that I want to rebuild here is because we have that. And the senior center is hardware, symphony, hospital and doctors, good government. Recycled facilities were available. We had great weather, trees and wildlife. The theater, the Theater on the Ridge, those people are still here and I would love to see them perform. Good roads, walking trails, museum, chocolate fest, and community codes. Some of our weaknesses was like ADA compliance. No sidewalks, that really affects a lot of people, not being able to get to and from school or to and from just the grocery store. Lack of markings, the fire safety, the evacuation, which was obviously touched on many times. The four lanes on Skyway is obviously really important to so many people. The speeding and keeping that safe for everybody. Law enforcement. The shopping opportunities. A lot of us ended up going down to Chico, if not further, to accomplish what we needed in regards to like wardrobes. I love secondhand everything, so I love that we had so many of those. But now that the town is gone, we're not going to have those same opportunities to pull from the resources of all the generous people that donated. Lack of bike lanes, sewer. The code enforcement has been talked about a lot. And I think I can appreciate that because people are trying to work with others and some people just don't have the means. But obviously, now is the time to really, we have a fresh start. We have, the sewer affected like private buildings, private builders, restaurants, and any new businesses that were going to come into town. It got to be very limited of what could open due to the water and sewer issues. The garbage, the homeless, the drugs, all of that, we ended up being kind of an issue. And lots that aren't fire safe and needs code enforcement. Lack of variety in animal control with loose dogs. Somebody had mentioned culverts and would look into like the drainage more underground for safety. Opportunities. I really love this idea, housing for seniors and condos. I thought that was fantastic. We're missing a lot of our seniors now. This brought out similar to the plantation. I'm not familiar with that, but it sounds like it's a senior housing project, which if those got built and they brought in a lot of immediate housing, because there's such a housing need right now. And I like that communal feel. I love that. You can build and then have little gazebo's and parks and fountains that people that want to talk can come out to and others can join them. We have the opportunity now to build a variety of housing with a higher quality and solar and all the improvements for the safety of being on the wild under face. Improved exit for emergency vehicles. There's a lot of tiny roads to try to get through. Sewer again, more public parks. I loved our parks. I think we had a lot to choose from. Better parking. The entrance of downtown having a better curb appeal and walkability to shopping. And maybe even adjust it. It was suggested earlier in one of the meetings to even move it just around the corner. And I thought that's a great idea because that's a beautiful park. Traffic control around the schools. Gives us a fresh start for existing buildings, upgrade. So those existing buildings that made it, they're going to need more attention and they might not have the funds or the insurance to help build them up. But I would love to be a part of the pressure washing, the painting, and anything to help them get in line with the rest of their neighbors. Local shopping opportunities. We have small town character and I would love for that to come back. The ease of the permit process and not to sacrifice quality, but to make it like she was saying earlier about, we're special. I love the farmer's market and automatic doors could be adjusted on the businesses so that they're more ADA compliant. So thank you for my rambling.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we'll take your pad and your small pad, if you have it from your group with a sign and sheet. Group five, come on up, please.
My name is Michael. I used to have a property on Neal Road, I think catty corner from the small theater, which I believe survived. My house, of course, is in ruin. And anyhow, it's, I think everything we came up with was exactly what all the previous groups talked about. Pretty much, you know, we all agreed, once again, we liked the small town feel, clean air, friendly people, nice atmosphere, trees, nature, beauty, a fair amount of solitude, but also community. We also felt though that this was actually a great location as far as being equidistant from the communities of Chico, Oroville, Magalia. As far as if you were here, you could easily go out and visit those places, work there, go to school, run errands, whatnot, what have you. But also, we felt that this community kind of supported other places, maybe Cherokee or other smaller towns that were very primitive in comparison. We had conveniences for other places that were even more rural. Moving on to weaknesses. Once again, you know, although the usual. We also agree that we needed more of a sewage system. Looking at the older mobile homes and the older buildings, there was definitely a need for renovations and repairs. I kind of felt we had a bit of a downtown, but perhaps compared to Chico, we did feel that a more extensive downtown with more vibrancy could have been nice, more museums, cafes, eateries, you name it, to draw in people and tourists. We also felt there was a need for more evacuation routes in the event of their fire or disaster. Too many trees, which the campfire has resolved for us. Let's see. We also agreed, and this is probably worth repeating, that there was a need perhaps to enforce having defensible space. I mean, it's nice that some people were serious on this, but it would have been more effective if the entire community was expected to at least have a minimum amount of defensible space for their properties, be it commercial or residential. So that, once again, in the event of a fire, the entire community would have already been pretty much ready for a wildfire. And we also agreed that it would have been nice if we had better road quality, maybe some lamppost sidewalks, maybe bike lanes. The old Paradise made it hard to go for a night walk perhaps, or a bike ride. If you were a pedestrian, it was rather dangerous. That could be improved in the future. Finally, opportunities. And this, once again, is, you know, a repeat of everybody else talked about. Once again, a better sewage system. And I feel this is good for emphasis. This ties in with what people said as far as the museum's history, a town square, great idea. Also, maybe just art in general, murals, sculptures, more parks, more gardens. This ties in with making the downtown more extensive, more vibrant. I know Chico often has such things, if you go downtown and even to some of the surrounding communities, and I feel why not Paradise too? And once again, this gives us the chance for better fire abatement. Once again, greater enforcement of defensible space for your property. And fewer trees means you don't have to plant quest money in the future. It means you have better ambiance, better visibility, better sun, better light. And I think people touched upon this, once again, now that we have a kind of a clean slate, if you will, we can now make a point to build safer housing, safer buildings that are more upgraded, more modern. And once again, we take into account the future and the possibility of more wildfires. And I'm not sure if this was mentioned yet, but they have projected in the future more disasters, such as the campfire. I guess with global warming and change in climate, we're probably going to see more of this unfortunately, so we'll just have to adapt. And let's see, anything else that's worth mentioning again? That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much to group five. We're going to go eight, six, seven. Just a few hazards up here, so.
I'm Cherry Parsons, and I've been raised here in Paradise, and so have seen lots of changes. So as far as our strengths, our strengths are that we have a unique community that has unique homes. We didn't have the cookie cutter community things that you see when you have a lot of subdivisions. So we like the beauty of that. Also, low structures and so forth so that we could blend into nature. And then for us, we also had a lot of joy and so forth with our rec department, which has already been covered. So we want to go on from there with our community spirit and so forth. So some of our weaknesses that we found, we had quite a few of them. One of the weaknesses is that with the septic that we talked about, our septic systems, a lot of people did not have good education on how to use that septic system so that it would not fail. So we wanted to make sure that there was education to that. And also that we would have environmental impact so that they weren't flooding them out and making people have to have sand filters that didn't have to have sand filters before. So if they would look at those places. Egress was a big issue. We already talked about some of that. But also is that there wasn't grids so that like when the hospital needed to get ambulances through and so forth, they couldn't get through because roads like Nunnely and Elliott and so forth didn't go all the way through. So that was a problem which was there. Part of the, other part of it was some integrity issues where we have recall people from our government. They're also being put back into other areas within our community. And so recall after recall, it was sometimes not looking at the voice of the people. We also had communication issues the day of the fire, that people couldn't get notification and so forth, that we needed better communications in that way. And it continues right now, and that was one of the things that is adding on to our community, is that some people don't use computers because we have a lot of elderly. They need things that are more in paper or someone that they can call and to have that information be accurate at the time, one place, one resource that can be accurate at all times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, group eight. And do you have your pad too? Okay, now we're back to group six. Right here. And then group seven's up next. You got it?
Yeah, we don't need that. All right. You can't see those out there anyway, can you? This way I won't go through the list over and over and try to do more than three. We tried to emphasize the three most important things, although I may wander a little bit. I want to commend group four because I thought they were very articulate in expressing a lot of the opinions of our group. So the first group that went was really good. Okay, so we had some of the strengths. You've heard them before. There's affordability in the community. A lot of retired people move here because of the affordability, combined with the climate and the environment. A lot of people like the wildlife and the trees and being a little bit off the valley of Florida to the woods. The other thing that was an attraction was community services. Yeah, that's kind of broad because it included things like the hospital. It included all of the churches in our community and all of the things these churches do to serve the community. They're active, not just a place where people went on Sunday. And it included all of the parades and all the other events that folks have mentioned, things like the Boys and Girls Club, all kinds of things. And so those attracted people to this community as well. And the weaknesses that we looked at was, one being the loss of our hospital as being a major weakness because being predominantly a retirement community, not having the hospital is kind of a serious event. So that would be one of the weaknesses. The other was escape routes, as we saw during the fire. It was a log jam. Some people got out of their cars and had to run. And this also ties in with another comment that has been made before, and that is making the Skyway four lanes again, that it is a constant and continuous traffic jam. And so that was one of the things that was a weakness. However, another weakness was the lack of parking down there, downtown. So you've got to say, okay, if we can't park on the street, we got to create some parking off the street. Another weakness that has been mentioned before, and we're just going to be saying ditto and mega ditto's, was the communication during the fire. And another was the fact that, as was just in fact, we need people to create a defensible space, and we as a community need to enforce the defensible space. We may, even though this fire may have spread by embers, there may have been homes that were saved if they had, they would have had good defensible space. Okay, another weakness that I will then switch into an opportunity has been mentioned over and over, and that is a sewer system for our businesses. Businesses just don't create a convenience for us who live in the community. The sewers, those businesses being able to come here, because they have a sewer system, also means tax revenue for the city. And one of the things that Paradise has suffered from is a lack of tax revenue. Because we took our tax revenue and drove down to Chico. And we bought in Chico, and they got our sales tax. If we have more businesses locally, then we can generate more revenue for the city, which strengthens the community overall and gives us greater opportunity. So we were in favor of creating a sewer system for the businesses in our community, like along the Skyway, along Pearson, along Clark. And we thought maybe this might be a great opportunity as of this fire, to maybe get some state or federal funds to help build that sewer system, because it is not cheap. Okay, the other thing we had down, which has been mentioned a lot, is we thought we should take this opportunity to reimagine Paradise. Because as one group pointed out, it's a bit of a hodgepodge. It can be in places a little trashy. There are places where you say that the building codes have not been enforced. And one, one group mentioned the trailer parks, the rundown trailer parks. And so why not take this opportunity to reimagine the downtown? And I think group four talked about a walkable downtown with more stores, more things that we can buy here locally. Maybe this could become a destination for people who want to go someplace on a Saturday afternoon. And then also, taking a look at some of our zoning. One of the things that has been talked about is developers buying up streets or a lot of lots, and then we not having control over what they put on those lots. So that was something that we felt should be looked at. The other thing was improving communication, as we talked about in the fire, maybe having a siren. Enforcing our defensible. a siren, enforcing our defensible space. And then another thing was a concern about, an opportunity here about building codes, and about the affordability of building, which has been talked about before we started. So that was another big issue. We've got to make it affordable for people to rebuild, but it won't be a town. So I think that kind of is the highlight of the things that we talked about. Yeah, my name is Doug Carpenter, and I live over there kind of in the Redbud area, and my house is standing, and probably 70% in our street is standing, so we were very, very blessed.
All right, we had six, we're going to go seven and nine. Seven? Seven? No, that's fine. You don't have to.
Hi, my name is Lauren. I am a lifetime resident of Chico and Chico State student, and I've grown up coming to Paradise on the weekends to visit my grandparents, who are residents for 50 years, their house didn't make it. So I'm going to be really short. So we've talked about the beauty and the quiet of Paradise, I think that's very important for strength. Larger lots was another thing my group brought up, having larger lots than Chico or other areas. The history and traditions, such as the Golden Nugget Museum and other service groups in town. Moving on to weaknesses, the single lane roads, and having no clear town center was a big problem, and not having a big job market. My group mentioned that the hospital and the education system were the two main employers of Paradise, and that not having the hospital and a reduced school system was putting a big strain on people finding jobs. Town codes that restrict tree cutting was another big issue, and affordability of cutting trees for individual residents, like my grandparents had a hard time paying to cut the two trees in their backyard that they could afford to cut before the fire. And insurance affordability was another issue, how affordable will insurance be after everything is being rebuilt? Moving on to opportunities, connecting some of the dead end roads in the area would be a good opportunity, so there's multiple exits in certain areas. Also diversifying the job market, and having more access to the natural views. Another idea is creating a program for funding residents to create their own defensible space, since sometimes it's not very affordable for them. And creating a downtown with a public square, and developing more affordable housing and multifamily units, and also for the PID to create safer piping for the incoming houses. So those were the three.
Thank you very much. So the last group inside the room was Group Nine, they had a couple groups outside, and we'll be wrapped for this first session. So could the representative from Group Nine please come down? We didn't have a Group Ten, so then we'll do Eleven if you could be prepared. So Group Nine?
I have to go.
See that? Oh, you were all set to go.
Uh, no.
No, really? There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chuck Giles, relative newcomer to Paradise, I've been here since '02. Our house did survive, sometimes, as we all know, those of us who did have homes that survived, it's not necessarily all a great thing. One of the first things I learned about, and I am not a public speaker, but one of the first things I learned about public speakers is, the average human being has about a 15-minute attention span, and we are well beyond that. So at the risk of being redundant, I'm going to really fly through this. One of the strengths of it, of course, is a smaller town, less developed. One of the things that I've heard a lot of here is more development, more, you know, infrastructure. I think it was brought up in our group that we have to be very, very careful. I'll jump ahead to the opportunities. Is this an opportunity for the town to restructure, but keep the ambiance that was here? Paradise, the reason why most of us moved here was the ambiance, the woods, the suburban feel. Cooler temperatures, quality of life, Paradise compared to the Bay Area. At the risk of throwing in a personal opinion, I hope that Paradise compared to the Bay Area doesn't turn into Paradise turning to the New Area. One of the things that I haven't heard mentioned was lack of maintenance on our trees. I'm not sure that we needed fewer trees, that we certainly need to maintain the underbrush and the trees that were existing much better. Lack of sewers, underutilized performing arts center, and that goes along with what everybody was talking about as far as the downtown core, a place to go. Wherever they decide to put it, Paradise would benefit from a central downtown core where it can be considered a meeting place. Private roads are not adopted by the county or the town. Basically, what that essentially comes down to is the people on that street pay for the maintenance of that street. And I know that's, some people say, hey, they chose to live on that street, they can pay for it, but it's becoming very expensive. The communication system, we all talked about, some were notified, some weren't. We happened to be notified literally as we were fleeing our home, the call came in. Lack of cell towers. Everyone now, much to the dismay of us older people, has cell phones, and we need to maybe use this as an opportunity to improve the reception, or whatever it's called. Lack of bike trails, lack of sidewalks. You can certainly do this without making it a big town atmosphere. Three feet off of some of these streets, of course, is going to make them five feet wide, so plan for bicycle trails when you're improving these roads. Opportunities, just what I just said, the bike lanes, the sidewalks. Night lighting. I was telling my group, I think when I first moved here, I thought there must have been a town ordinance that said, when you walk around Paradise at night, wear something black. Because honestly, it's very, very difficult, and there is no room for anybody to walk on the sides of these streets, nor to ride bikes. Review the zoning ordinances, and cut the red tape. At the risk of public safety, I know that there's a lot of things that can't cut, but there are some things that they would be able to at least expedite during this process. We talked about it's being a unique occurrence here, and it certainly was, and I think that the town can bow to it being a unique circumstance where that something has to be done to expedite rebuilding. Also, right before I came up here, one of the other people in our group said that no one has mentioned maybe the construction of safe zones. That may have been a huge benefit in this fire. A lot of people ended up being in parking lots, you know, thinking that they were safe, it turned out they weren't. But, you know, while you're building these parks in the downtown core, set aside a safe zone where there is no, well, it's at least a little safer as far as any kind of natural disaster like that. And it can also be a meeting place where each town representative had one of the safe zones assigned to them, and could go and keep everybody informed concurrently. Okay? All right, that's what we had. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. We're down to our last three groups. So we did not have a Ten, we've got eleven, twelve, thirteen, and the first session will be over. We really appreciate your patience, too. It really is important for us to hear what you were discussing, which was extensive.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for everybody sticking around and listening to the rest of the groups that are still out here. My name's Greg Thomas, and this is my lovely assistant.
My name's Renee Anderson.
Again, we found a lot of the same strengths that everybody else did. Couple of the things that I didn't hear listed are some of the clubs and activities that we have for the younger kids, and also for adults, and the historical character of the buildings that we had in town. Going on to the weaknesses, again, lack of sidewalks, lack of parking. Felt that we could really use more activities for kind of the tweens, from say 12 to 18. A lot of people might not come back, yeah, the lack of the warning system that everybody else has brought up, or a lack of a functioning, properly functioning warning system, I should The disposal of large amounts of vegetative waste for people that can't fill, or have more vegetative waste than can fit into one or two of those brown cans every two weeks, but also don't have access to a truck to get the waste to the vegetative station. And the current lack of healthcare facilities in this town. Going on to our opportunities, we would also like to see the power lines go underground, really look at fire-safe landscaping for the entire town, both businesses and government buildings, and also private residences. More cohesive aesthetics for the town, would like to see more opportunities for small businesses, and along with that comes the sewer system in the main corridors. A central business district that's pedestrian-friendly, off-street parking in those districts. Would also like to see a dedicated fire hydrant system in this town, not one that shares the same backbone as our drinking water system. A functioning warning system, would like to see a teen center or a skate park. I've been living in this town since 1981, and we've been trying to get a skate park here since 1989, and it still hasn't happened. Again, revising the evacuation, the current evacuation routes, make them wider, straighter, have a better plan for evacuation.
I think we really need to look at, someone touched on it before, the tax base in this town, because I've talked to people, they're not coming back, we're not going to have 45,000 people again. We need to do something to create a tax base, and I think this downtown area with pedestrian walking area, where there's quaint stores, where it's a destination for people to come and have a family-friendly afternoon, get the ice cream cones, whatever. We need to draw people into town, because we're not going to have the population to do that.
And one of the things that one of the other members of our group brought in is, maybe we should reach out to Chico State and Buick College, and get in touch with their ag departments, and see if we can't get a replanting program going within those departments that the students could do for credit. So, yeah, I think that's about it. Yeah. Thank you very much.
We're going to do Twelve, and then if Thirteen could be on deck, that would be great. We knew we'd get here eventually.
My name's Mike Edgman, Paradise resident for 30 years, I live over off Feather River Place, just off of Pinson Cursin. I think you said, if somebody's already covered it, why repeat it? Something everybody's been covered already, so there's not much to say. Just a couple things. What are Paradise's strengths? I think it's the unique, we talked about the unique character, quality of the town that people like living here. This isn't Chico, it's a quieter atmosphere, and that's what people like about it. What are Paradise's weaknesses? We were a town within a forest, and this was a long time coming, and unfortunately it happened. And as far as defensible space, this is just my opinion, this fire went through the town as a crown fire. It went through the trees, it just blew through the town. So however, I think we've all learned something. In fact, a lot of people, other than people in Paradise, have learned about what happened here, and we have an opportunity, when we rebuild this town as far as landscaping and stuff, to make sure this never happens again. And I think with the number of trees that are going to be cut down, it's going to look totally different. So when they do replant, and I like the idea about getting some college students involved, that's great, that's a good idea. When we replant this, this is going to be, I think, a model city, or a model town that's going to show how people can change things from worse to better. So that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have our last group, Thirteen, thank you. Did you have a pad too, Group Twelve?
All right, my name's Kathleen Turner, we've lived in Paradise about 32 years. I worked down at Buick College, my husband's been a family practice doctor here in town for 32 years. Most of everything that we talked about has been addressed in the previous groups, but there's a couple points I wanted to emphasize. One was, what came up first was the natural beauty, the small-town feel, the sense of community, and the culture of volunteerism that existed in Paradise. There's also a strong historical basis. We have roots, and I think that is a good foundation on which to build, that all communities don't have, so that's something we can focus on in the future. There's a sense of patriotism, some things that may not be a part of all communities, which I think are a part of Paradise. Some of the weaknesses, and there are a whole bunch of other, we have five pages of strengths, but many of them have been, most of them have been addressed. One of the weaknesses currently is a lack of local builders, and so as we go forward, it's hard to find somebody to rebuild, to build your house if you want to rebuild, so right now that's a problem. As is, has been mentioned, sewer systems, spotty cellphone service, internet, escape routes, warning system, kind of an architectural hodgepodge in the signage in some of the downtown areas. The opportunities going forward, everything that has been a weakness in the past, and everything that has been a strength is an opportunity for the future, it seems like. So we can capitalize on what was good and strengthen what was weak. Vegetation management, enforce that, walkable, attractive downtown area, these were mentioned. One of the things that was suggested was prioritizing an intermediate plan for RV, for some kind of an RV park with services, so that those who want to rebuild have a temporary housing location. Because right now, there's nowhere to park your RV, and a lot of people that want to rebuild are in RVs, and so if we could designate, you know, if the town could designate an area and restore an RV park where people could be as they rebuild, that might encourage people to rebuild. Another opportunity is the window of opportunity that we have for potential funding. I know a lot of big corporations allocate a certain percentage of their budget to projects that come to the forefront, and certainly the burning of Paradise was unprecedented, and so it seems like we have a window of time where we might be able to get funding support for things like a sewer system, some things that are in real need, that we have real need of.
I went to school with, switched schools when we were in high school, because there wasn't the opportunity that you get a PV, or she'd go higher, or places like that. So I know a lot of people moved away due to that. Another thing we talked about was empty buildings. It seemed like people would rebuild, would rebuild, I mean, build new buildings before they bought or leased out a different building, and then there would just be empty buildings downtown, or in different places. And then there would just be empty buildings downtown or in different places. And then put in a sewer system. Weaknesses, after the fire, obviously, there's no hospital. So, for older folks, that's tougher because, you know, the response time and not being able to get what they need. Emergency response, I know there's not a whole lot of EMS and first responders up here after the fire. And the biggest thing is the water supply. You know, a lot of people that are moving back because of it. Even if they're, when they come out with a clear plan, that will definitely ease a lot of people. Opportunities, change Skyway to four lanes, improve the road infrastructure, and maintain the small-town feel, keep all the events we had before. Make sure we don't lose that because that was the biggest part of this town, and that's why I love growing up here. Basically, I see this as a fresh start. I still plan on staying here, and I think we can improve from here and rebuild, and I think it'll be a great opportunity, and we could definitely do it. Another thing that was brought up was shopping opportunities. So, like downtown, there wasn't much before, and it seemed like businesses were always going out. Like, one business would move in, and then another business. I don't know what needs to be done, if there needs to be like better sidewalks or something, or make it feel more inviting. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate young folks participating. We've had too many of my peers here. And, no offense, but we're all in it together, but really appreciate that. So, group number two, if I could have your spokesperson come up and present for you. You're group three in the middle.
Hello, Michael. This is Marcia. I'm thinking, Marcia, do you want to go over the bullet points, and then I might add some detail.
We're filling in as we go here. We kind of took an overview of where we'd like to go. And Mike had a great idea in terms of dividing the town into Old Town and then a larger, maybe movie theater municipal area that would be up by Kmart. And the Old Town, I'll let them explain a little more about that, but would be down where the Depot Park is now. The idea was, why would people want to move here? That we know that there's a housing shortage, we know a lot of retirees from the South, a lot of telecommuters. So, how would you structure this town so that they would want to move here and live here? And the idea, kind of like Marion Park in Chico, incorporate bike paths and walking paths, restaurants, pedestrian friendly, so that you could get out of your car and move around. Let's see. That's as much as I can remember. You can probably fill in some details.
Yeah, so to start with the Old Town, New Town idea, I've heard other people bounce that around. One opportunity there would be for an Old Town with a theme, the way Nevada City has a theme, would be the same theme would be the Old Town. And people have talked about moving our existing small business area, which is on Skyway, closer to Depot Park, and making that a center of a new Old Town. And that would free up eventually, as businesses downsize on Skyway, it would make it easier to open up Skyway to four lanes, as a lot of people have recommended. Then, when you have the larger stores and the chains and so forth, there's an opportunity for that existing on Clark Road, which is already wide, has sidewalks, has existing shopping centers that survive, like the Kmart Shopping Center has the movie theater and things like that. So, that would be a good opportunity for newer businesses and larger businesses. And we talked about, as far as cohesive neighborhoods, having a mix of affordable and more affluent housing. And affordable housing would have to include high density, which is apartments. And possibly, having a neighborhood, the apartments could be, some of those could be in that Clark Road sector near the commercial, so it would be walkable for people. But also, you don't have, say, low-end apartments in one neighborhood and affluent apartments across the neighborhood. They could sort of be close together so that the people who just don't happen to make as much money don't feel alienated or marginalized. And the only difference being, they could both be quality apartment buildings, but one could just have more amenities than the other, such as larger apartment size, enclosed garage, just swimming pools. The other would be more affordable, one couldn't. The people would be somewhat co-mingled and, you know, and be able to mix together as a community. So, that's for the downtown area. Incentives for businesses would be setting up the infrastructure, possibly in that Depot Park area, so that it would attract businesses to buy lots and build commercial there. And zoning would have to be set up for that, to incentivize that. And what are any other incentives that the council could come up with, you know, tax breaks or whatever? So, you know, that would tie in employment opportunities.
And then you mentioned the industrial area at the end.
Yeah, we have an existing small industrial area, everything on the south end of Clark Road, down to Easy Street and American Way, and it's somewhat limited. But if that could be incentivized to attract more businesses and light industrial jobs. And if it needs to be expanded, maybe as far as Ewald Court, where the bowling alley of Paradise Post Building was, and everything south of that. I know it wouldn't be the most attractive gateway coming up Clark Road, but that's an area, you know, we wouldn't want to necessarily have industries scattered around throughout the top of town. But that would be a good area to isolate that. And then, yeah. We were talking about a campfire museum, should be a part of the town, a permanent museum. And I envisioned something like, if anybody's ever been to the Mancinar Museum on Highway 395 that memorializes the internment camp there, the people who designed that did such a great job. It would be great to recruit them. But imagine a museum where you walk in and you see Paradise the way it was before the fire. And then you walk through another corridor, and you see the videos of people running from the flames and all of the destruction, and then you see the opportunities in the new town and what has blossomed, you know, from that. So, anyway, hope we can fulfill that dream, just a dream at this point. Anyway, that's group two.
Thank you very much. I don't know how many groups we've heard from. In total, that was the first time that idea came up. So, you know, when we say, you know, think big, we just never know when a group's going to come up with a new idea, and that's why we do this. But thank you. All right, group three, you're up. Looks like group three's very optimistic about their presentation. Excellent.
Okay, so I'm here representing group three. I'll trans skip through the things that we've covered at some of the previous discussions. So, some of the strengths for Paradise were, are, that's not congested. And it was desirable for people. Other things that were desirable was a multi-generation family area, people fourth, third, fourth generation living here in Paradise. Schools, relatively safe schools, good learning environment for the kids, a great place to raise children because it was that small town, or is that small town. The scenery, you had a beautiful landscape, and so that was desirable. Small businesses, and everybody kind of, everybody in town, it was pretty nice to see. Paradise was relatively affordable. It was the scale that we talked about earlier. It was, you know, you could get housing down here or here, it just depends on where you were in that scale, and everybody had the opportunity to live in Paradise. Community resources, there's a lot of opportunities in Paradise for dance, other clubs, things like that. Natural resources, we talked about a little bit earlier, the outdoor recreation, very desirable. And the location of Paradise is relatively centrally located, and allows access to a lot of other activities. As far as the weakness, over time, we've seen some increased traffic, and evacuations obviously were a problem. Skyway getting in and out, it was a little congested. One of the weaknesses Paradise kind of grew too quick. There was a period of time where Paradise seemed to shut down at 5:00 o'clock at night, everything was closed. And then all of a sudden, you turn around, now Paradise is, things are rolling late. So, that was a big change that people saw. No sidewalks or streetlights, relatively dark, and mainly some of those critical areas were pretty dark in town. Street sign addresses were pretty hard to see and find, very difficult. The socioeconomic status for the town of Paradise was on the grand scheme of things relatively low, so it's going to make it difficult when it comes time for people to come back and rebuild. There was no real defensible space in Paradise, so it was hit and missed, depending on where you were. And one of the weaknesses are, again, is going to be some insurance issues, if people find affordable insurance. So, opportunities, we have the opportunity to make our schools safer. You know, some of the schools have multiple egress or ingress spots in them, so we can pick those things up. Sewer system, there was discussion of some research that Bill Gates had done with some toilets. Partnership with Chico State and Buick College and the California Conservatory Corps about raising local trees, bringing some of that natural habitat back. The same with master grads and native planners and things like that. We have the opportunity to change the variety of trees. We've sent back some of the trees that were indigenous to the area, some of the dogwoods were brought up and things like that. They don't often need fine trees. Management of forest, we have the opportunity to put some of the utilities underground. A lot of them are there already, but now that the PGD has done a lot of that clear cut, we have some of the right-of-ways, we have the opportunity to put stuff underground as they're. Solar, because we have some of the more open area, solar is a good opportunity for people in the town of Paradise now, as well as potentially having some storage with that solar system. Tiny homes, community, tiny homes are kind of a new and growing trend, but it'd be something that we're going to be able to look at and have areas where those are going to be put. Tour of art, along with the same thing at the museum, have some sort of way to kind of show, you know, what the struggles, where we were, where we are now. We've talked about the rework of downtown, rebuild the museum and preserve the art. Just when you thought you were done, right? The opportunity for biotech and plant biology and have some research done here. Again, bike paths, walking paths. Make, currently we have the bike path, it was the old railroad grade. Turn that thing into a better way to have egress, ingress, so.
Thank you very much. We have one last group this evening, group four. Here's their board. Watch the steps, there are little treacherous.
Hi, I'm Barbara. My husband and I lived in Paradise for over five years. And we lost our home and a couple of vehicles in the fire. We were deciding whether to come back and rebuild or buy a home, so that's kind of where we are right now.
And I'm May Russo, my husband's been May Russo, sitting back here. We've been in Paradise for about four years, love it. Our house is badly burned in the way, garage and everything else is destroyed. But tonight's been very, very interesting with these groups, and other people helping me to talk to other people that we are staying in Paradise, so.
Okay, strength, that Paradise is very friendly and beautiful. And, I mean, it still has its beauty, and it's affordable. That was really plus for the area. And our environment here is very unique. And someone said unusual, that it's kind of an unusual environment. I think that might be true, maybe some people might think that because the restaurants, everything close up, that like at nine, that another street's all closed. But, and it's quiet, which is left. And we did have a great hospital and great doctors and staff. We're sorry to see that that's not going to be happening. And also, Paradise is a very generous and faith-based people, and we're very proud of people. And we also have people that volunteer all the time, which is really nice. And our senior center is very helpful. Someone brought up that they liked the idea that there's garage cells and yard cells, and we miss that because we would do that a lot. The community has really been together, and our neighborhoods are basically very safe. We found that to be true. There's so much recreation with Paradise Lake and Orville Lake for all ages. It's not just for one age group, you can enjoy it all. And it's close to the canyons. We have so much beauty around us that we're very, you know, blessed. And some of the weaknesses we discussed are that, at first, we were going to be able to come back to our home sites and stay there, and that changed, and kind of, it was one moment, the next moment it wasn't. And quite a few people that we've spoken with are very upset about that, that they can't come back and stay in a motorhome or RV, some type that's, you know, fully, you know, continuing. And also, the change of policies that are going to be happening, that's going to be hard for some of us and maybe not, you know, for others. And that we all know a little bit more about the ways in and ways out of Paradise. And I heard someone else mention about the notification of the fire because there was none. And that we hope that in the future, that will definitely be changed because some people weren't told at all. As example, we were called by our daughter in Chico, otherwise maybe sound asleep could not be here. We also would like the Skyway widened, you know, back to the four lanes, two in and two out. We would like the above-ground utilities taken out and put underground. You know, the phone and everything, that would be very, it's also much nicer to look at. And our schools need to be updated, they're outdated a little bit, as I heard earlier, as far as the, um, educational benefits and courses that they offer. Opportunities, um, they would like to, or we would like to, like the historic opportunity of Skyway, there's so much up here that is historic, that we would like that well-known, and, um, a suggestion was Pearson and Almond for like a new downtown area that's kind of spread out instead of everything on Skyway. And opportunities to, now, to bring everything up to code, where we need to be, uh, more bypass, and, um, again, opportunities with the power underground, the telephone and cable. Uh, now, this, I'm not really sure about, because I think a lot of the guys in her group, and mostly the guys, they were talking about energy-staining structure for fire protection. Sorry, I don't know a lot about that, but, um, I hope you have some idea, because they were talking about, I'm sorry, I don't have much information about that. And increasing the water in Paradise Lake, to try and keep it at a good level. And, um, we need more, um, cellphone towers, you know, in Paradise, if that would be possible. And, um, they're talking about a biomass source for the future, like trees and etc. And...
This is treacherous.
I think what you did earlier.
Did that help?
Oh, more than you'll ever know.
Okay, good. Well, that's what we're here for.
Yes.
We do what we can to help, that's what we're here for. Uh, thank you all for coming out tonight. Um, we've had a terrific turnout today. So, things that we heard in this room, this was great to be able to interact with you in small groups. We had other meetings going on over the gym, and they were reporting out, and we had, I think, twenty-six groups report out from the earlier session. That's in addition to twenty-six or so groups that reported out last meeting. We have a lot of ideas now on the table to sort through and organize, and we appreciate that, and none of them are ours, which makes it even better, because you're doing our work for us. So, we wanna thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, up on the screen in just a minute, you're gonna see the dates for the next meeting. So, uh, we showed the schedule before, but, um, March 21st, that'll be stricted now because we're done tonight. So, the next phase is testing your ideas, and coming up with recovery projects, actionable things. Heard a lot of the same things from groups, which we appreciate, because that really provides us backup and moving forward with those initiatives. So we'll be back, and, um, on, uh, April 16th, 17th, and 18th, that's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Four weeks from tonight is that Thursday, and we're gonna do, um, a large presentation, both at four and six again, and we really encourage you to come to that. It's gonna be a little different format, we'll be presenting out the vision, the goals and recovery projects, and then in the gymnasium in the same building, we're gonna have those projects on board. We're gonna be here that we're creating those, um, but we're gonna have them on board, and then we're gonna ask you to go around and put comments on, which could be a green dot if you like it, a red dot if you don't, or a blue dot if you think that's a vision that you really should buy into, we'll give you a color key. And if you wanna write us a comment or put a sticky note on, we can do that too. That's critically important, because we have to score these opportunities as a high community priority, or medium, or maybe not as high, or maybe there's some things. I've heard roundabouts go both ways tonight. We liked roundabouts here, we didn't like roundabouts over there, so, uh, there'll be some debate. That's fine, that's what this process is about. Those other two nights, um, we'll put more detail, and you see it up there, makeinparadise.org if you hit the green button and log on to that site, you'll be able to see, um, what exactly we're gonna do each of those nights, but it's probably gonna be a doc, drop-in discussion with the planning team, which is our team, over in the gymnasium, if you wanna talk in a smaller group setting, see what we're up to. That's fine, we would love to have your input, because as we're crafting plans, that's the time to, um, modify them. And then in May, just the purple box date to be determined, we'll be back to see, did we get it right, make a presentation to council, and council has the difficult task of adopting the plan and deciding how we're gonna move forward. So, again, thank you to the church, thank you very much to our facilitators, they did a wonderful job, and we appreciate everything that they helped with today. We look forward to seeing everybody next month. So thank you very much for coming out, we really appreciate it.